So we're going for it.
Good evening and welcome everyone, councillors for press and public to the annual meeting of town council. This meeting will be held under regulations allowing local authorities to meet formally using remote technology. These are available on our website and the meeting is being streamed live and is available to you on our website. As you will be aware, local government elections are imminent and I was asked councillors to be mindful of a per de rules and that political statements should not be made during the meeting. I will now ask for town clerk to carry out a roll call of all councillors and ask you to confirm that you are present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Baker. No, councillor Blanchard Cooper.
Present.
Councillor Buckland.
Present.
Councillor Chase.
Present.
Councillor Long.
Present.
Councillor Malloy.
Present.
Councillor North East.
Present.
Councillor Price.
Present.
Councillor Rhodes.
Present.
Councillor Tandy.
Present.
Councillor Turner.
Present.
And councillor Dr Walsh.
Present.
Back to you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Item number one on the agenda is mobile phones. Members are reminded to switch their mobile devices to silent for the duration of this meeting. Item number two on the agenda, I'll ask town clerk to read the names who have sent their apologies and I've been informed there are none. Is that still correct?
Correct, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is declarations of interest. The standing declarations are noted. Members and officers are reminded to make any other declarations if they become apparent at the appropriate time during a meeting. Are there any further declarations? No. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, number four. Minutes, the minutes of a meeting is held on the 25th of March have been circulated and can be found on pages four to 12. In accordance with the town council's standing orders, section nine A, members are reminded that no discussion on the draft minutes of a preceding meeting shall take place except in relation to their accuracy. Can I therefore ask if everybody is happy that they are approved?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yes.
Thank you. Arrangements will be made for these to be signed formally when circumstances allow and this will be recorded in the minutes. Item number five on the agenda is town mayor's report and urgent items. I would like to pause for a moment to remember Prince Philip for Duke of Edinburgh and those we have recently lost in our parish. David Twin and Eileen Smart, both who were great champions of our community and our wonderful local character, Tony Mollica Franklin. Thank you, everyone. I'll now ask town clerk to advise if there are any urgent items.
There are none, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Six on the agenda is a public forum. In accordance with remote meetings protocol, which has been introduced by the town council and members of the public wishing to address the council or any of its committees during remote meetings should have emailed their submission to us one clear day beforehand. I'm advised there are none. Is this still correct, town clerk? Thank you. Item number seven on the agenda is the appointment of town mayor. I will ask the town clerk to take us through the next item.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. By way of explanation for the public perhaps more than councillors, each year the deputy mayor is appointed and the deputy mayor is also mayor-elect and chairman of the council-elect. So therefore, in accordance with the town council's standing orders, the deputy mayor, councillor Malloy, is to be installed as the town mayor and chair of the council. This will be from the date of when the annual council meeting would have been, i.e. the 13th of May 2021 and will be for the forthcoming year. So I'd like to ask the deputy mayor to read out her declaration of acceptance of office, which will formally be signed at the due date.
Good evening. As of 6:30pm on Thursday the 13th of May 2021, I, Michelle Malloy, having been elected to the office of the town mayor of the council of the town of Littlehampton, hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties there of according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code for the time being as to the conduct which is expected by members of Littlehampton Town Council.
Thank you, councillor Malloy. And as a proper officer of the council, I confirm that the declaration has been made today, Thursday 29th of April 2021. And back to you, Mr Mayor. Sorry, it says here, back to you, Miss Mayor, for reasons I shouldn't read the script. Actually, I'll hand back to you, councillor Malloy, with my congratulations and ask if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. I'm going to be very honest, this isn't a place where I ever thought I would find myself. But here I am with a great responsibility and opportunity in front of me and I really am grateful for that. As well as continuing to support the town that I love, I will be striving to support my chosen charities, not just in raising funds but in raising awareness. The charities I will be supporting are West Sussex Mind, Aaron Youth Project and the Aaron's Veterans Armed Forces Club, all of which I've chosen for their contribution to supporting the residents of Littlehampton with their mental health and wellbeing needs. I would like to thank councillor Chase for his guidance over the last year and congratulate him on the success he had given given the challenges the world has faced in this pandemic. And of course, I should introduce my consort Shay Everton, who has supported me in my role as deputy and who will be beside me throughout my coming year, along with my daughter Maggie, who keeps me grounded. I'm looking forward to the challenges ahead and serving the community that I'm proud to belong to. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Malloy and I'd like to congratulate you. Item number eight on the agenda is the appointment of the deputy mayor. And town clerk will take us through that.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll just add on the last bit, obviously congratulations as well, but we will try, the meeting in June is more likely to be a proper meeting rather than a remote meeting and we will be picking up some of the other bits and pieces that would normally happen at annual council, like formally handing over chains and so on, so and speeches as well. So don't feel you've missed out councillors. So then we move on to the appointment of deputy mayor, as the mayor has said, and the council is asked to elect and appoint a deputy mayor who will be the vice chair of the council and town mayor-elect for the forthcoming year. There are a number of things I just need to outline here. If there's only one person nominated, then duly seconded, with no other nominations, we can go to general assent. If there's more than one, members have it before them, the ability to go to a secret ballot. This is the only time that you can because you're having an election amongst your peers. We have got the mechanism in place to do so and it will be explained in due course. But in the first point of call, we need to see how many people are nominated and duly seconded. The process as such will be a nomination. We'll check whether there's a seconded. The nominator will explain why. If the person who's been nominated will have the opportunity to say something and if necessary, the second can wrap that up. If members wish to ask any questions, they can do at that point. If there's more than one, we will do the process again. And if there's four or five, we'll do that way and then we'll get to how we proceed. So on that basis, are there any nominations?
Yes, we have a nomination from councillor Tandy.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I would like to nominate councillor Long for the position of deputy mayor and town mayor-elect. Councillor Long has fulfilled their role of mayor excellently before and I believe would do an excellent job again.
Have you a second for that councillor Tandy?
I believe I do, and councillor Dr Walsh.
You do?
Thank you. Did you wish to say anything councillor? Do you mind me taking this through, Mr Mayor? Sorry.
Please carry on, Peter.
No, I formally second councillor Long for the position of deputy mayor.
Okay. And councillor Long, did you wish to say anything at this stage?
If I may, just a few words. I'm delighted to be nominated. Yes, I have fulfilled this role previously, some years ago. I have to confess, it was the hardest year of my life and the most enjoyable. I had a lot of events, a lot of meetings and met huge numbers of wonderful people around Littlehampton and it was an absolute honour to represent the town, to represent the council. I would like to think, I now actually have more time to offer and would be able to fulfil this role even more comprehensively and I would appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, I'll leave the second summing up if necessary to see if we've got another nomination. So we'll come back to councillor Dr Walsh. Are there any other nominations?
Councillor Michelle Malloy.
Hello. I would like to nominate councillor David Chase. He has been a really strong front-facing mayor during a time when he could have easily taken a backseat approach over the last year. And I've watched him graft hard, both in the public eye and behind the scenes for our town and he really is in this for the residents and the hard work and change and not the kudos. I believe that continuity is key to supporting our town through this pandemic and the unprecedented times and I know that Dave's proactive and can do and give an approach will benefit not just myself in his support but also the town as a whole. And I really do urge people today to vote based on who will truly do their best in this role as opposed to what colour rose up they wear.
Thank you councillor Malloy. And I'm going to take a guess here, but is it duly seconded?
Yes, I'll second that formally.
Thank you. Did you wish to say anything councillor Chase?
Yes, I will do. Thank you. Yeah, it's been a very different year for the whole town, the whole community. I thoroughly enjoyed my year as mayor. It's been very satisfying in the way the whole community has pulled together through this Covid pandemic and I would really like to finish the job I've started this year. So I would ask for your support. Thank you.
So thank you councillor Chase. So on that basis, are there any other questions that members have before we get to summing up and then we'll go to a vote? I'm going to take that as no. So councillor Dr Walsh, did you wish to say a few words?
I don't need to say anything further, thank you very much, except to second the proposal for Jill Long as mayor. She's done the role before, she knows what it involves. She commands support across the whole of the town council and I think would make an excellent deputy mayor in this coming year and town mayor in the year after.
Thank you, Dr Walsh. And councillor Price?
Just waiting for the red line, sorry. I would just like to obviously second what Michelle said. Dave has shown how dedicated he has been throughout the pandemic and I feel that he should be able to be deputy mayor and then town mayor as mayor-elect when we haven't got a pandemic to show what he really can do for the town. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Price. So do I take it that members would like a secret ballot? I just need a nod of the head of one member, to be honest.
Agreed.
Okay, so I'm now going to hand over, Mr Mayor, to Juliette, who will take you through this. What she's going to do, just in very brief summary, is it will be anonymous. You will have a voting option in front of you. I'll let Juliette run through it all. There will be one person who will know, but she is sworn to secrecy and that's my committee assistant, so. But at the same time, she will forget it instantly. So, but I'll let Juliette explain the process.
Thank you, Peter. Councillors, to ensure that every councillor votes, your names will be called and you'll be asked to submit your votes. This will be anonymous with only a tally of the number of votes for each candidate being recorded. You cannot change your vote after you have made your choice, so please be careful before pressing the submit button that you'll see on the voting panel shortly. For the voting, you will need to open up, make sure that your chat boxes are open, but importantly, you will need to wait for the pop-up box to appear. Emily, if you could show that now. You should be able to see voting options for each of the candidates and there will be a further two boxes for abstain and clerk. Please do not select the clerk option as that is there for technical reasons and allows us to check the tally. When your name is called, select your appropriate option and then click the submit button and finally done. The outcome of the vote will be conveyed to the mayor who will announce the result. If everyone is ready, we will proceed with the vote, so please wait for me to call your names.
Sorry Juliette, can I just ask, there's two screens that have come up, one on the chat and one in front of me. Which one am I using?
Either one.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to ask the same question. Thank you.
And myself.
Thank you. Any more questions before I proceed? Okay. Councillor North East has a question, Mr Mayor.
Yes, please councillor North East.
Just quickly, I know you said the mayor's going to announce the result. Will that be, we will get the numbers, won't we? We don't need to know who's voted for who, but we will get the numbers, won't we?
Yes.
To you, Mr Mayor, that's correct. We will announce the number of votes for each candidate as well as abstentions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, proceed to the vote now. So I'll call your names individually and I'll start with councillor Blanchard Cooper. Councillor Buckland. Councillor Chase. Councillor Long. Councillor Malloy. Councillor North East. Councillor Price. Councillor Rhodes. Councillor Tandy. Councillor Turner. Councillor Dr Walsh.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, can we just check that councillor Baker's not here?
Yes, please.
And I'm taking from the no response, that's confirmed. It's okay.
Is there a way of knowing that submitted vote has gone? Yep, we're just checking now. If I could ask you to bear with us for one moment and we'll just check the votes. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Juliette.
Hello councillors, sorry for the delay. David, are you ready for the results?
Yes.
Okay, so through the anonymous vote councillor Long has seven. Councillor Chase has four and there's no abstains.
Thank you.
Sorry Emily, thank you for that Emily. And so therefore, Mr Mayor, we can confirm that councillor Long is duly elected deputy mayor and mayor-elect.
Thank you and congratulations councillor Long. I will now ask the town clerk to take us through the next items on the agenda, number nine. Appointment of committees' representatives on outside bodies and cheque signatures.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. What I've managed to do today is circulate, following discussions with group leaders, a proposed list of committees with memberships and with chairs and vice chairs. Members will be aware of the arrangements that council agreed last time round in terms of being fair amongst the four different political groups, but also trying to seek proportionality. Members will also be aware that we've got three by-elections in just over a week, well, in a week, sorry. And that those members will need to be slotted into committees. So we've hopefully created spaces for those to happen and we will revisit this at the June council meeting. At the same time, there's a delegation proposed within the report to me in consultation with group leaders and the mayor to slot these people in and make any necessary changes that we need to do to make that happen as we go through the next cycle. So what I was proposing to do, Mr Mayor, is just because there isn't a list in front of members, I was literally going to read each committee out. I don't propose that to do that for the representatives and outside bodies, but although I think Emily's about to stick it up, but if you've got that in front of you, but I'm just going to run by them, so what I'm going to do is leave policy and finance to the end. So community resources, it's proposed that it be chaired by councillor Blanchard Cooper with councillor Tandy as vice chair, with the remaining members being councillors Malloy, Turner, Dr Walsh and one of the new members. I'll run through the rest of them and then if members need to stop me, please do. Governance and audit, it's proposed to be chaired by councillor North East with councillor Malloy as vice chair, with councillors Buckland, Rhodes, Price and one of the new councillors. Planning and transportation, I'm going to study dally on a moment, is proposed that councillor Long chair it with councillor Buckland as vice chair along with councillor Turner and one of the new councillors, but hopefully the one on Beach Ward because that's not represented. There is also a possibility that other new councillors will join it, but that does give an invite and a lot of untrained councillors going on to the committee. So I have spoken to councillors Chase and councillor Tandy and although it slightly unbalances the numbers, they would be on three committees rather than two. I would ask councillors if they would agree that they be at least included through to June to give that committee enough trained councillors. I'll come back to the whole thing in a moment to answer any questions. Property and personnel, it's proposed that it be chaired by councillor Chase and councillor Price as vice chair along with councillor Rhodes, councillor Baker, councillor Tandy and a vacant space. So before we get to policy and finance, I need those to be approved because the policy and finance comprised, the membership comprises chairs of other committees. So are members, firstly, have they any questions and secondly, are they happy with those proposals that will see us through till June?
Agreed.
Yes, agreed, especially about planning and transportation. To see how that pans out over the next couple of months. Thank you.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, I'm hearing no contrary voices. So I'll just move to policy and finance then. And that is proposed that it be chaired by councillor Dr Walsh with councillor Long as vice chair, who's also coming on as the chair of P and T. It says vice chair on my list, but something strange there. But also with councillors North East and Chase as other committee chairs and one of the new members. So I read that again because I didn't read that just really smoothly. Councillor Dr Walsh, councillor Long, councillor Blanchard Cooper, councillor North East, councillor Chase and one vacant space. Is that in agreement? Are councillors in agreement to that?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, the second part then is the representatives and outside body, which I've circulated. It's largely the same as before with a few small changes. Again, we'll look at it again in June, but if members are happy to approve that on block, I will read it if you wish me to. But you probably don't.
No.
No, thank you.
So if members are happy with that.
Agreed.
Yes, agreed. Thank you.
And the last part is the authorised cheque signatures, which we have to actually record, even though it's written in our standing orders. It's slightly changed from last year because last year the chair of property and personnel was also the mayor, or this year I should say, which meant that the vice chair of P and P was a cheque signature. This time around, that's not necessary because all the committee chairs are able to be there. That excludes governance and audit because of the role of governance and audit, so that doesn't count. So all the other committee chairs, which we've just approved, plus the mayor, I also, you approve those as your authorised cheque signatures, et cetera.
Agreed.
Agreed.
And I believe that's the report.
Thank you, Peter.
Oh, sorry, no, there's one, sorry, I apologise. I completely forgot the community, the council's own committee. I knew there was something missing in my, missing there. The other factor is the community centres subcommittee, which is a subcommittee of council. It's proposed that the membership remain the same, Mr Mayor, because continuity is needed and in fact it remains the same for the rest of this council. And that the chair of it be councillor Tandy and the vice chair be councillor Long.
Yep.
Agreed.
Yes, agreed.
I'm going to take that as a cent, Mr Mayor, and I'll hand back to you.
Yep, and we move on to item number 10 on the agenda, the next committee cycle and annual town meeting. And I'll hand back to you, Peter, to summarise.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm going to start with the latest news on it. The latest news is that, I mentioned in the report, that there is a legal case that the different tiers of local authorities and, in fact strangely, supported by the government has gone to the courts to see whether they could claim that there was existing government, has gone to the courts to see whether they could claim that there was existing powers in the legislation to hold remote meetings. That's been turned down, to be honest, I think, to be frank, that's not a great surprise. There is still an outstanding element about whether hybrid meetings will be allowed in terms of not including the public and the press. My gut feeling is that they won't, but that's not up to me to decide. But what I've put in place, and I've talked to group leaders about this, is I think up and down the land, everyone's trying to come up with imaginative ways forward. I've tried to keep everything as much the same as we can, because it works, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So what I've written into the report is a proposal to, in effect, do exactly as we do now, but call them advisory groups and instead of resolving things, recommend them to me to do, which means that you can meet remotely, you won't have the situation where we're trying to run hybrid meetings or not allowing the public in when we should be, and that will take us through the next cycle of meetings. We don't know whether there'll be, we're hopeful that everything will roll out quite nicely after 21st of June, but we don't know that. What we do know is that the meeting on 21st of June at the moment does require your personal attendance, because we've got the final accounts, et cetera, on there, and I don't think we can operate without that, without that meeting. That's likely to be held in Southfield, and we'll have to work out how we deal with public and so on, and the press. The last part of the report talks about the annual town meeting. We need to, we should have held it, but we fortunately had permission in the last year not to do so. The government haven't sorted that one out either. Because we're in Perth and so on, it would be impractical to do that. So we've proposed the date of the 8th of July to do that meeting. Just for clarity, and I did say, I mentioned it, a couple of councillors asked me, the annual town meeting is the one where the mayor and I sit at the front of a meeting and answer questions from the public, and we hand out town merit awards and so on. The annual council meeting is tonight and is not on the 13th of May now, it's been moved. So don't turn up here on 13th of May, I understand there's another meeting anyway for you to go to. So apart from that, I'm really happy to answer any questions. I have done briefing sessions with some members to try and clarify, but I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr Mayor.
Very useful briefing sessions, Peter, and I thank you for that. I do not see anyone busy typing, so I'll move on to number 11 on the agenda, which is exempt business.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, can we just agree the recommendations, which is...
Sorry, Peter.
On page 19, there's five recommendations.
Agreed.
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 Yes, agreed.
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 That's your general assent, Peter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
So now I will move on to item number 11 on the agenda, which is exempt business, and there is none. So I shall now close this meeting at 7:03. Thank you all for your attendance.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.